Ladies and gentlemen, welcome for the village board meeting of June 27. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will call Mrs. Thomas.
Trustee Purcell. Trustee Willis. Trustee Colton.
Here.
Trustee Hyferman.
Here.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Here.
Trustee Roman.
Here.
President Hofel.
Here, representing staff this evening, to my left, our village manager Napoleon Haney; to my right, our village attorney Chris Cummings; to the audience's right, our police chief Denise McGrath; fire chief Bob Grubowski; economic and community development director Angela Metzger; public works director John Schaefer; and assistant village manager Tyler Hall. The minutes are June 13th. Any additions or corrections, trustee Colton?
No, obviously.
Trustee Hyferman.
No.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Nothing for me.
Trustee Roman.
Nothing.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Colton, seconded by trustee Harris Jones. Roll call, please.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
And trustee Roman.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. The claims list in the amount of $276,613.53. Comments or questions, trustee Colton?
No questions.
Trustee Hyferman.
I have no questions.
Trustee Harris Jones.
All of my questions have been asked.
And trustee Roman.
Nothing for me.
May I have a motion to approve the claims list, please?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Colton, seconded by trustee Hyferman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
The claims list is approved. Item number seven, here from the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board on any subject not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am. I'm ready.
Good evening. I am Homewood resident, and I have Mrs. My daughter. She's disabled, and we live on Mallard Avenue. And I recently called last week to tell them that the sidewalks, when she uses her scooter, the sidewalks are so uneven that it caused her fall at a couple of occasions that they just had to come and tell me to help her get the scooter up because she was trying to walk my granddaughter to school. Within four or five days, the village came out and they fixed the area where we live. So I want to thank you for that. But the front part of where the subdivision is, they still need to take care of that part. So the majority of it is done, but when you first enter Mallard, there's still divisions like this that her scooter still falls on.
South side or north side of the street?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, but the majority of it was taken care of, so I want to thank you for that. The other issue that I really had was I wanted to know if we could get a sign, a handicap sign, in front of our house because most of our neighbors, well, all of our neighbors really are really respectful because when the vehicles come to pick her up, there's always room there for them to get there. But we have a neighbor that parks his state vehicle, it's a truck, in front of our house. He lives two doors down, and he continues to park there. So whenever it's time for her to leave or whenever her ride is coming, they have to pull on the other side of the driveway. And I've asked him, you know, I've gone over to ask if he could move it, and they basically don't do it. So I wanted to know if we could have a sign there. That way, we won't have to worry about that. And we're in a cul-de-sac where it's not bothering anybody, and none of the other neighbors even park there except for this one particular situation. And it is a state vehicle, truck, that is just parked there, creating a problem.
Our police chief is very persuasive, and I'm sure she can talk to them and suggest that they move their truck elsewhere. So if you can see the chief before you leave.
Well, I did call a couple of departments here, and I was told that as long as it's legal parking, there's nothing that can be done.
She had the power of persuasion.
Okay.
Believe me.
Okay. And thank you again for working so fast to, you know, do the sidewalks because it made a big difference for her. Say thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Come on in.
For the record, D O Y L E, L A N D is David R Y. Last time wrote before this body, the racism exhibited by the Starbucks on Halsted continues. A number of journalists have watched and videotaped the same thing that happened to me in my role of making sure that young black men are employed, and I've been doing it for 30 years. The same thing has occurred. So, seven days from now is the Fourth of July, and I am 53. I'm not going to do or think how Bobby Primo acted in Highland Park last Fourth of July because I'm not of that age range. However, I do not speak or represent the age group that's obviously throughout Cook, Will, DuPage, Kendall, Grundy, and other counties deciding I'm angry and other people are going to pay for it. So this is neither a threat or a promise. I'm just an award-winning journalist who's tired of covering, writing, and supervising reporters for stories where other people act in their anger as if they can't control it and other people must pay. What does that have to do with Starbucks on Halsted as a close? One, that all the individuals treated the same way are under 30, like Bobby Primo. Two, you cannot fix what you will not face. Again, I'm a Christian. I am not going to yield to someone else's belief. And it's my understanding at the end of the day, the white district manager for that African-American female's manager ordered what happened to me. So with that being said, I figured I would update because, again, I appreciate Chief McGrath back in February having a conversation because the officer who came at the request did his job. I'm a Marine Corps veteran, so I recognize when people do their job. However, the patience and absence of persistence of that age group that's terrorizing Cook, Will, Grundy, and other counties. Homewood can't afford publicity. And what do I mean by that? What monitoring, what assistance, what guidance goes on for that age group which is clearly in pain? What are we doing to address it? So it's my hope that not just my situation, but for my fellow journalists who have documented the same behavior existing. Again, as Maya Angelou once said, "You cannot fix what you will not fix." Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? If not. At this time, I have a motion to appoint Nicole Leeson to the beautification committee.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved by trustee Roman, seconded by trustee Colton. Roll call, please.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Please, come on up. Please stand around, please. You have to face the camera so you get past.
Raise your hand. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Nicole Leeson.
Having been appointed to...
Having been appointed to...
...the beautification committee.
The beautification committee.
For the village of Homewood.
For the village of Homewood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the municipal ordinances.
And the municipal ordinances.
For the village of Homewood.
For the village of Homewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
My duties on the beautification committee.
My duties on the beautification committee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Trying to get the camera started. Mr. Hall, your presentation.
Okay, during the month of May, the village of Homewood introduced a community engagement contest for young adults and children under the age of 18 to guess the number of streets in Homewood. There were 63 guesses for the correct number of streets, but unfortunately, only 14 participants fell into the correct age range. The winner of the closest guess was resident Camille Johnson, guessing 214 streets in Homewood. The correct number of streets is 171. Camille was only off by 43. I'd like to present this customized street sign to Camille Johnson. Congratulations.
Come on, we'll put it up here.
Sure.
I'll come over.
You go.
John, did you want to give it to us? This is our public works director maintains on signs. He made that up, unfortunately. Okay.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Mrs. Thomas, the unanimous vote.
Board has asked, passed resolution R. 3148, congratulating Robert Pettigrew on his retirement from the Public Works Department after 30 years of service. The board has asked to approve resolution R. 3149, approving a redevelopment agreement between the villages of Homewood and East Hazelcrest and Wing Creek, Illinois LLC, for the redevelopment of property to construct a casino, hotel, and parking garage within the northeast tax increment redevelopment project area in Homewood and the Halsted Street redevelopment project area in the village of East Hazelcrest. The board has asked to approve a budget amendment allocating $25,280 of American Rescue Plans funds and approve the purchase of two I Plan tables from I Project Solutions LLC of St. Joseph, Missouri, in an amount not to exceed $25,280. The board has asked to waive competitive bidding for these purchases for the building and public works departments due to the technical nature of the tables making competitive bidding impractical. The board has asked to approve a budget amendment allocating $94,572 of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the removal and replacement of the entire east side of the front concrete apron of the fire department at 17950 Dixie Highway, as well as the concrete curb and sidewalk along Dixie Highway. The board has asked to award the bid for this work to Strata Construction Company of Addison as the lowest responsible bidder for an amount not to exceed $94,572. The board has asked to award a bid to M.E. Simpson Company, Inc. of Valparaiso, Indiana, the lowest responsible bidder, for the water distribution system-led survey project in an amount not to exceed $25,425. This work is part of public works infrastructure maintenance and helps reduce water loss. The board has asked to approve a budget amendment allocating $73,550 of American Rescue Plan funds and waive competitive bidding due to a sole-source provider so the village can purchase 20 sets of fire turnout gear coats and 21 sets of fire turnout gear pants from Municipal Emergency Services, Inc. of Lombard in an amount not to exceed $73,550. The purchase will provide each firefighter in the village with a second set of gear. The board has asked to award the bid for the 2023 capital improvement project for Marlin Lane and Marlin Port Water Main and Storm Sewer Improvements to M. &amp; J. Underground, Inc. of Moni, the lowest responsible bidder, for a contract amount of $675,138.81. The board has asked to approve a budget amendment allocating $137,000 in American Rescue funds for the Lincoln Avenue Main Replacement Project and award a material purchase contract to Core and Main of Mokina, the lowest bidder, to purchase water main parts at the unit prices shared with the board for an amount not to exceed $29,078.60. The remaining $108,000 will cover project costs for essentials, including equipment rental, asphalt work, stone purchase, restoration costs, et cetera. The board has asked to pass ordinance M. 2256, granting a variance to allow for a parking pad at 17915 Rail Court. The planning and zoning commission unanimously approved the request.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to these matters? Trustee Colton.
Have you listened?
Trustee Hyferman.
It seems like we're starting to use the ARPA funds all for good things, but it would be nice, as the summer progresses and as these come before us and there are adjustments to them, if we can schedule some sort of workshop or some sort of discussion or an organized way to keep our, so that we understand and see how the ARPA funds are being used as the projects come close.
Trustee Harris Jones. Trustee Roman.
Nothing for me.
May I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Colton, seconded by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Mayor Hofel.
Aye. New business. 1313 175th Street, a four-acre site for apparel redefined. Mrs. Harris.
Good evening. On the agenda tonight are items related to purchase deal, redevelopment of village-owned vacant land at 1351 175th Street and an office building at 1313 175th Street for the operation of an assembly and production facility, apparel redefined. John Leroy, owner and CEO of Apparel Redefined contacted the village approximately a year ago, June of 2022, in efforts for relocation and expansion of his offices and production facility. Homewood was one of several communities that Mr. Leroy considered for relocation of the company. Apparel Redefined is a custom apparel screen printing and monogramming company, and they are here and will present in more detail about the company. They currently operate out of a facility in Crestwood, Illinois, and they've outgrown the current location. Village staff met with Mr. Leroy toward his company and suggested that Mr. Leroy consider a four-acre site on 175th that was owned by the village. The village has owned the land since 1992, at which time we purchased 178 acres of land along 175th Street. This is now the Prairie Lakes Business Park. In 1996, the village put in infrastructure required for development to promote the development of 41 acres out of the total 178 acres. The four-acre parcel is the only remaining parcel in the Prairie Lakes Business Park. The village has tried for many years to market the property for development, no success. The only interest has been from heavy trucking companies for truck parking, for that type of facility, which we have not considered. We refuse to consider. This is a clean operation. It's an ideal use for this site. There will not be trucking on this site. Mr. Leroy, however, needs a total of six acres for the facility. The office building directly to the east of the village's four acres is currently on the market for sale. The village has proposed acquisition of the office building as a Tiff eligible expense. This is in a Tiff district, and the transfer of both properties to Apparel Redefined. This project benefits the village long-term through development, return to the tax rules of a village-owned, tax-exempt property that's been vacant for over 31 years. The addition of an assembly and distribution company would increase the village's overall equalized assessed valuation, its EAV, and the development brings in a step in growing business to Homewood that will provide sustainable wage employment and potential for future job creation. Joseph Pulaski, Pulaski Financial, and John Leroy, the CEO of Apparel Redefined, as well as their attorney, Dan Shapiro, are in the audience today's meeting, and they've prepared a presentation about the company and the development project.
Thank you.
Let's introduce Joseph.
Thank you, Angela. My name is Joe Pulaski. I'm with my old firm, Pulaski Financial. We are a site selection firm, and we've been working with Apparel Redefined for the past year. I just wanted to mention a few things before I turn the podium over to John Leroy, CEO of Apparel Redefined. When we started working together, we sent out a request for proposal to about six communities, including a number in Cook County, some in Northwest Indiana, and some outside of Cook County within the state of Illinois. It was very competitive. We wanted to let you know that your staff responded with one of the very best, if not the best, response we saw. It became very clear to us that they were very interested in attracting businesses. Not only was their presentation very well organized and complete, but they went way beyond that, and they talked about all the developments that are going on here, from the train station to the multifamily development that I can see right outside of the window here, and some of the small businesses that have been successful. And then, when John and I sat down with staff, it became even more clear that it wasn't just a good response, it was also really the way they feel about their businesses here in town. So I wanted to mention that, and also mention because of the competitive nature of it, we really, in order for Homewood to be a viable candidate to go forward, we really needed assistance in terms of incentives. We were competing against Northwest Indiana and others outside of Cook County. And so the Class 6B, the Class 8, these things I know are difficult for communities to approve along with tax increment financing, but in this case, it was necessary so that the numbers would work. So that's my brief presentation. I now want to turn it over to John Leroy, CEO of Apparel Redefined. Thank you.
This advances. Okay. First off, I just want to say, a second to everything that Mr. Pulaski said. The village of Homewood's been absolutely phenomenal with everything they've presented, the meetings. Mayor Hofel, Angela have been absolutely spectacular, and I really appreciate everything that everyone's done thus far. So a little bit about myself and the company, just some history. I prepared some slides. Some of them might be tough to see. The company was founded in 1970 by Angie Rich Bochensky. That's where originally the company, A&R Custom Screening and Monogramming. There's a lot to put on the business card, so we eventually changed it, but started in 1970, they actually moved out of their basement to a location in Ridgefield that was the home of the company for about 40 years. Small, 2,500 square feet. Then, 2006, I graduated college, and a good friend of my dad's owned a sporting company in Payless Hills. And I was actually coming back from an interview from Walsh Construction in the city, stopped in the sporting store and, you know, just talking with him. And he said, "Would you like to be my business partner?" And I'm like, "Well, in one." You know, I thought I'd just assume the sporting store because I built trophies for them growing up and being athletic. My childhood, playing college hockey and college baseball, I knew I wanted to stay close to the game essentially, right? So I said, "Let me check it out." So I worked there for about six months, kind of undercover, and feel like that it was something that at 22 years old at the time, I felt, "Let's give it a shot and see what we can do." I also selfishly was coaching high school baseball at San Diego first. I'm from the south side, born and raised, and then was coached at my old mother at Marist High School. And 2006 was kind of the advent of the moisture management, moisture management's apparel 100% polyester from Under Armour and Nike, we're introducing. And as we all know, swag and merch attract kids to high schools. And I wanted my kids to come to Marist High School, and I knew that if I had the coolest stuff to wear, it would really help. At the time, though, with that material that was entering the market, it was very tough to decorate, and we had to figure out a way how to get it done. So unknowingly and kind of haphazardly, we kind of carved our niche into athletic apparel decoration, and we started focusing extremely on that because it was high risk but also high reward because there's a lot of people that do what we do. But figuring out that technology was kind of the wild west, if you will, of apparel decoration. So that's really when we started carving our niche. Fast forward to about 2017, my partner at the time was retiring. I took over the company, and we moved into our new facility, or new at the time, in Crestwood, which is about 27,000 square feet. So at the time, it was a massive jump, tonnage jump, we turned the size. We felt a little bit overwhelmed, but hit the ground running, and within a year, we really hit our stride, and as we know, COVID happened. The good news is during COVID, you know, we didn't shut down for a day. We didn't lay anybody off. We were able to pivot. We started making masks for Christ Hospital with our sewing team, our embroidery team. And then, the rest of the country that wasn't as tight as it was up here in the north in terms of sports, still needed apparel. So Texas, Florida, Alabama, Georgia, we're still using our services. And if you look at the bottom of the screen, our vision is to be centrally headquartered here in Chicago, south side of Chicago, but have locations in the one-day ground ship zones across the United States. Because one of the things that Amazon's kind of brought onto the American consumer is speed. And to be able to deliver to the east coast, to the west coast, to northeast, you're losing four to five days' round, and most high schools and colleges that we serve aren't willing to pay next day here. It will blow up their budget. So we need to be within a one-day ground ship zone, and we want to have a central location because it is advantageous to still be here in this area to serve many of the 13 to 14 Midwestern states within a one-day ground ship zone. But some of the other areas of the country, it's difficult for us to get to. It also provides growth opportunity for our clients because for me, as an owner, one of the things I really focus on is creating careers, not jobs. I really want to address through the skills gap in America and return America to, do my part, return America to manufacturing greatness. There's been such a negative connotation through the school system, just, you know, especially from the non-trades-type people, that there isn't a career opportunity for you out there. And one of the things, we just had 24 kids today tour, two separate groups of 12, with the MCIP program, manufacturing careers. We're getting odd with something. So they came through, we sat down, we did two hours lunch and learn with all 28 students, 24 students, and I talked a little about AI, right? Because AI is replacing a lot of editorial jobs, content creation jobs, graphic design jobs. But the one thing AI is not replacing is hard skills. Your plumbers, your electricians, your screen printers, your embroiders. It doesn't mean you can't have a synergy between people and technology, but there should be more focus on hard skills, and I feel like that's lacking, and we want to our part to bring attention back to it, especially when our stuff can't be outsourced to China or other, you know, developing countries because the turn time is so quick. If you think about it here in the Midwest, high school baseball, you know, school starts, or I'm sorry, trials start usually March 1st, your team's picked March 7th, your first game is March 23rd. So from the 7th to the 23rd, you have essentially 10 business days to order from Nike, Under Armour, put logos on names, numbers, and get them to the school. So a lot needs to happen that would blow the budget if you were to be sent overseas, and the communication aspect is difficult. So I'm dragging on here, I apologize, but in 2020, so back in 2015, I realized we needed to do something different. So we developed our own software, proprietary, that enables us to do more with less. We are able to communicate with a lot more customers across the country through creating this unified platform that allows customers to submit order information to us, but it also helps because of our diverse workforce, not everyone can read and understand English if they can understand pictures, right? And we don't want to limit anyone's opportunity by not being able to work without having the ability to read or write. We do employ lots of, or several people with special needs. We work with a lot of local programs in terms of, you know, high schools and people learning job skills. We have, St. High School brings at least eight to 10 students a day for $4 a day to learn job skills, right? We want to get them involved in a process. We've actually hired some of them on full-time over the course of the last three years of working with this program. So we feel that the software's really helped enable that growth for the company and for them as well. It's also been very rewarding for individuals of us in the company. So the software's been huge for us. So here we are today. We're at a crux where we're kind of capped by our capacity. we are today. We're at, we're at a crux where we're kind of capped by our capacity. Our growth is a little capped because it takes space. And we're expecting, if things go well, that we'll be able to continue our growth and continue our plan to essentially dominate the athletic apparel industry. So what is our purpose? Our purpose is to be the company of choice and partner of excellence. In 2019, we won the Entrepreneur Magazine's, there's 360 companies that are awarded this best place to work at, which we're very proud of. Myself, you know, my 13th year at that time of being involved in the company as an owner, second year as the sole owner. It was, it was nice to see because in a lot of those award settings, you kind of pay to play. You know, it's a little bit, you pay to this, but it was actually done anonymously. After you qualified, Entrepreneur Magazine sent out a link to employees and they had to fill it out. So it was based on a panel of judges that read through the survey. So really cool there because every decision that we make, we run it against our purpose. Does this make us a better partner for our clients and a better place to work at? Our vision is to be the nation's premier athletic decorator. And that's how we'll achieve by having those seven locations across the country. They're not visual right there. Our core values, and this is something we discussed today with the individuals from the MCIP program. This is part of our performance evaluation, the behavioral component and the performance component behavioral. We want everyone on our team to be, or everyone on our company to be a team player, to be loyal, tenacious, innovative, and pursue excellence, not just at work, but outside of work as well. Our mission, talked about this a little bit already, but we bring organization and speed to apparel decoration through a synergy of people and technology. What was so cool today is to see 16 and 17-year-olds that might be somewhat downtrodden on their ability to get into what they perceive as the next step of their life in high school, or I'm sorry, in college, or when they have questions, right? So we have an individual that's running a machine that we just got. There's only 12 in the country. And with the questions that were coming out, like, how much does this machine cost? So this is a $250,000 machine. How long has he operated? Oh, about a month and a half. It's brand new. And just seeing their faces line up to see the opportunity that it's an unbelievable responsibility to run this machine. It's essential to every function of our screen printing business. And it was, it was cool to see that opportunity and eyes kind of lay out like, oh, I can do this too. We have another machine that we just got. There's only five in the globe. I'll show you a little bit here, but it's a DTG machine that, again, we hired an individual from, where's she from? She is from Vancouver, Washington. So she, we flew her in, tested it out. She's actually been running a similar machine from a different manufacturer for about four or five years. But again, it's a wonderful opportunity here. She's actually living in downtown Homewood. Again, very helpful finding a place for her to live. So, but again, just to focus on, with every advancement that there has been in technology within our industry, you need a person to interact with the machine. Even though machines are replacing or speeding up the processes, they're not totally replacing the people, which is good, which is why I love the industry, because we're able to create relationships internally and externally. It's not your old way of doing things. It's a very relationship-based, which I really enjoy. What do we offer? So we offer a bunch of different services. Originally, we first started as just screen print. These are kind of our marketing names for each of our services. But LaserDeck essentially is laser engraving. So if you think about Yetis, where you can engrave Homewood philosopher Vikings on there, we do that. FastFlex is vinyl signage of banners. FuseFlex is a digital print on heat transfer material. If you've ever been in the brand house downtown for an Under Armour, all the, no, I'm sorry, the Northwestern polos, because they're really thin, don't accept embroiders really well. So that's the technology that we do on that. ProPrint is screen print. SwizzDish is what we call embroidery. Teen Twill, if you have, you know, signing a package stamp, if you have a Bears jersey that you wanted to rid of, the decoration type on there is usually twill, if it's an on-field. So that's that heavy type of material that is for mostly combat sports, football and hockey right now in some across. UltraFlex is, I brought some samples. I'll show you in a minute here of all these. UltraFlex is a silicone 3D transfer mainly used for school polos. We do them at HF, we do them at St. Lawrence, we do them at Marist. It's just a cool look. Again, these polos are getting thinner. And we think of like a soccer crust, it's thick, and I'll just start puckering. So that's just a different technology. Deco Forge, we employ six graphic artists. That's what they do all day is create designs. Quick Pack is our fulfillment service. Transfer, screen print transfers, banners, signage service, and Digi Prints, this is brand new. This is a, this is a machine, I don't know if you guys at time would like to see a video. I could share the slideshow if you want to watch it on your own. But this is a machine that we got from Portugal, one of only five in the globe. And it's just, it's really cool to see. And it's really going to be a new revenue driver for us for the print-on-demand market. You guys familiar with print-on-demand, what that means? So if you think back in the day when, I'm saying the day, it's like about eight years ago, but clients would sell online. And they would create 500, 250 SKUs between our sole sports. They have a warehouse somewhere centrally located where they warehouse all this apparel, and then someone goes on and orders. Well, that, that whole science of how many smalls to order, how many mediums to order, is it designed to be successful? This technology kind of eliminates that, and everything's truly printed on demand. So you don't have to have the risk of missed inventory, a bad design. The other thing it really does, and this is what we're building for our internal team, is it allows our team to make more money and contribute more value to the company. So we're allowing each one of our employees to create their own online store. I'm a hockey and baseball guy. I don't understand the gaming world. I probably never will. But a lot of my younger employees are all gamers, and they're on Twitch, they're on this, and they have decent followings, 5,000, 6,000 people watching them play video games. Again, something that I will not understand, but they have a captive audience. And they can go and create an online store, use their infrastructure, sell, create designs, no risk, does sell, no big deal. But if it does, they're out, they have an opportunity to make some money out. So they're motivated, helps the company get some more exposure. We're really excited about it. This is our current facility. People that have been here, been there from, from this panel, or from the board, can see it's pretty, pretty well-prembed right now. But we consider our company to be built on four things. A solid foundation of organization, speed, people, and technology. This is just kind of a workflow of how things kind of progress through our current facility. Not ideal. It was an old auto body shop. When we moved in, we had to remove lifts, we had to remove spray booths, and we just kind of had to make it work because it took me about three years to sell my old building. And someone walked in on Thanksgiving and said they wanted it, but the caveat was I had to be out by New Year's Day. So we had to find somewhere to move, move all our stuff inside of a month. So we kind of had to fit square pack and round hole, but we had to work. Speed, again, to go from order to consumer inside three to five business days is really what drives our growth. And there's always ways to optimize. And with the software, this is kind of an outline that we show our clients of how we can provide the transparency and speed for them. People, people is the biggest thing that makes our company grow. We have seven leaders on our leadership team, all of them have been with the company for at least five years. We've grown from when I first started in 2006, from four people to 58 currently. And I feel like we could, we could, if things go well, we can expect to probably double that in five, five to seven years. Technology, this is kind of the X factor, right? Because like I said, there's a lot of people that do what we do in our space. But specifically for the athletic department or world, the technology that we develop, it is proprietary, helps us get more clients pretty organically. When people kind of find out that this is there, we've been able to pick and choose the clients we want to work with simply by if they are adapting technology. Not, not everyone has, but it helps make their lives and our lives easier. Who we serve, who are our clients? So for example, HF is a client of ours, HF High School. It's an indirect client because our client's actually the company that services HF High School, which is a company called BSN. They're the largest company that people have kind of never heard of. They're a $5 billion company. They are the company that goes into high schools, colleges, sign up through exclusive Nike or Under Armour deals, and then they outsource their decoration to companies like us. There's 1,395 sales reps across, across the country. And there's basically three main players in that group, and we service both of them. Essentially, the salespeople kind of switch back and forth, and all they really care about is how quickly and how great the product looks for their clients. So we have a good relationship with a lot of them. We just kind of cracked into that market about six, seven years ago. There's 390 people like me across the country that do apparel decoration for BSN. We're in the top three. So there's a lot of room for growth inside of that top three because BSN is currently moving away from internal decoration and going to more outsourcing. So there's, there's a lot more opportunity for companies like ourselves that are invested in growth. Right now, our clients are geographically bound to the Midwest region that we're in. And we like focusing, finding clients that are embracing technology and looking to grow their business or brand, and seek quality and speed over price. Just for example, this was, I think this case study was back in 2018, 2019. But it just kind of shows a couple stats. At that time, there were 13, there was 13 tier ones. And we were, I think, number seven. So in the last four years, we climbed up to in the top three, which is impressive despite all the stuff that was going on in the, in the country with, with COVID. We, we developed another company that we do DBA, as in Business As Underdog Apparel, and that mainly serves the B to C community. What we realized before COVID was that we are so heavily invested in athletics, which in 2008, when it was a recession as well, I'm like, this is great. When a recession took business, business was up. I never thought there'd be no sports for, you know, longer than two weeks, than almost two years. So we're like, we need to pivot and do something differently. And I know I'm dressed nice tonight, but I usually don't dress this way as we do at Home Depot with an embroidery logo. And most of corporate America has gone that way. So we really started focusing on businesses with 50-plus employees doing at least 2.5 million in sales, and that require a print-on-demand fulfillment. A lot of people now have plugged into their payroll provider, ADP, Paylocity. When you, when you get hired by a company, you put your apparel size in polos, quarter zips, hats, what have you, whatever the company wants to provide will show up at your door so that you look somewhat professional in your shoes. But we're, we're one of the companies behind that, helping with companies like Custom Ink and other, other companies that are helping trying to provide that, that branding need. We're also cutting out the Custom Inks and going direct to consumer as well, because we feel there's a big need for those companies that are under 5,000 employees, 50 to 5,000. We've had a lot of success with that as well. Our team, like I said, we're very, very diverse. We have 50, numbers a lot, 58 right now. We kind of break down on a lap. We have five artists, 18 people printing, three people in our QC, two in our internal sales. I don't have to read off the screen, but our employment type, the top left pie chart shows that we are very heavy. We only have a couple part-timers at one seasonal right now. We are very diverse in terms of ethnicities, and our pay type is pretty much mostly hourly, except for a couple on the leadership team. More demographics here, our generations, we're primarily a young company, getting younger, which is a challenge, but it's definitely something that we're up for. Pretty evenly, or a little, little heavily split towards, towards male, but pretty balanced there. And our compensation stats are down at the bottom there as well. Where we're located, our team comes from all over. We have a highly dedicated staff from all over the Southwest Side. We even go as far west as Aurora in Naperville, you know, up into North Side of City, several from Indiana, a couple in Homewood. So where we're at right now is pretty essentially located. And that's something we definitely were considering when, when we consider the next expectation for, for where we're going to go. Our tenure on the bottom right, it shows that there are a lot of people that are committed to the company. Most of our people have been there at least two years. From the leadership on in our middle management have been there at least four or five years. If you look at the top, the top one, our turnover compared to industry, the industry NCIS code that we're in, we're pretty much below the industry average in terms of turnover. So once, again, lying to our purpose, we want to be the best place to work for, which I'm going for. Just to give you an example, three years ago, we didn't offer any benefits until you have a full benefits package, medical, dental, IRA, 3% matching. We always had paid vacations and paid holidays, but getting that max package is really important for us. These are just some of the, the Illinois and federal programs that we've worked with. Safer Foundation, we, we have a great experience at Safer Foundation. We consistently hire from that program and have had great success. The D230, that's Stags, Hamburg, Andrew. And like I said, most of the activity comes out of Stags, on a daily bussing program. But we've, we've hired many kids from all those districts, including 218 as well, from Eisenhower, Richards, and Shepherd. MCIP, that was a program that was at my facility today doing the tours. We're looking to bring on probably six interns starting July, I believe 12th. They'll be with us for a six to eight week internship program. Illinois Work Center, we have several participants working on the OJT program, which is a great program as well, which the MCIP kids will trans, or will go into the OJT program, and the BCS as well. And at the bottom, just have a recent article, it was published in a patch about the D230 kids that are coming into our facility. Growth projections. So we expect over the next five years to be growing 20 to 50%, depending on some economic conditions and also space constraints. If we're able to move forward here, I think that closer to 30 to, I'm sorry, 40 to 50% is definitely doable. Like I said, we're capped right now. Economic conditions do need to improve. The market is a little bit down right now, as we all know. But however, what we're able to do to pivot with our unique relationship with this company out of Portugal as a manufacturer, is create a showcase shop, where we can have two to three more of these machines. Each one of these machines right now is projected to spin off anywhere from two and a half to four and a half million, depending on total utilization percentage. Right now, we just got our first one. But if we move into, or when we move into a larger space, we fully expect to have at least three or four of those machines. Just to give you some ideas on full-time employment growth, 2006, like I said earlier before, we only grew in 12 in six years. But you can see, you know, starting when I took all that, where that red circle was in 2019, I'm sorry, 2018, we had, went up to 29, 37, and now 58 full-time. We could definitely expect to add, add 12 to 15 more full-time employees over the next two years. Right now, we've hired a lean process engineer through a tutelage of IMAC, which is another organization that we work with, I forgot to put up there. But we've increased our inventory throughput by 200% just in the last three, three months. So we're really excited about all the opportunity that we freed up in capacity, we freed up internally. But also, we're training three to four more internal employees on how to do lean process engineers, which is really going to help their growth and also give them more career opportunities, and we open up more locations across the country to go be directors of operations, directors of customer service, and have that lean experience that is really valuable to the manufacturing facility. Moving forward, in the next six to 12 months, we're utilizing tech. We're doing process mining, AI machine learning, and we're going to, we're going to be also the only shop in America to have AI inspection software mounted on at least three of our decoration types to look at how the image should be based on the digital version, and what's actually coming off the machines. We're going to develop some IP around that, and hopefully have another avenue, another stream of revenue, I should say, building all that data around our QC processes. So with that, again, I appreciate your time. I know it probably went a little bit long, but really proud of what we did or do, and really looking forward and expect to have great things if we're able to make something happen. I really appreciate all your time.
Thank you, Jenna. Terrific presentation and a great overview of your company.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or?
Comments, a question from anyone in the audience? Phil?
So I, I actually stopped by Mr. Leroy's business, just to see his operation. I'm on the economic development. And he was so gracious. He didn't know that. But he, I sat and waited. And he came down and he took me through the entire operation, took me around the shop. It's a, it's a great operation, very clean. I love his business model and how he is very dedicated to his employees as well as his customers. And I think that if, you know, it's one of the best places to work. It should be one of the best places to live. So look forward to having you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ken?
Thank you so much for coming in. This is really impressive. I looked at your company sort of like when I saw your incoming, we, he stopped you a little bit.
Sorry.
And this is, this was a really good presentation. One of the things that I really liked, especially since we're talking about, you know, what's going to probably be kind of a significant investment on our part, I'm interested in finding companies that are going to be partners.
Sure.
You know? And so one of the questions I have for you is like, how do you plan on engaging with our community, with our schools, with the village, with just sort of the whole community as a whole? How are we going to sort of work together?
Yeah. So I think continuing what we're doing in whatever village we plan on going to is something that's very important to us. So working with local high schools, something else that I think that we really want to do with this new piece of equipment, the economy has moved from a product economy back in early 1900s to a service economy to now it's an experience economy, right? And again, how do you expose? And again, how do you expose kids to new things where you can develop skills? So we want to take this piece of equipment, and I remember like, you know, I was a kid going, I want to go to Discovery Zone for my birthday, my mom's like, no, you know, it's like, you're too wild and we'll never be able to get you out of there, so how do we, how do we involve the community and expose them to new technology and new ways of doing things and build the customer base? Well, we could do, create a t-shirt, pizza parties for like birthdays and stuff like that, where on Saturdays, Sundays, we open up the shop, we have pizza and a really nice showroom where you can see the state-of-the-art equipment behind glass and the birthday boy or girl comes in and they have a design for a t-shirt and then we make it, every kid leaves with pizza and a t-shirt and experience, because then they can see like, hey, I can be a craft designer, I can run this machine, something a little more educational, more rewarding for the village and for the business, so again, it's a partnership, both, both parties win. We have a lot of ideas like that and it's just something that we're looking for, looking to execute on, but right now with the space constraints, it's difficult to do.
Yeah, I'm a big believer too, just like you are, in, you know, the trades, I've got, my son is going into the trades and I could not be happier because he is going to be my employee one. So he's going, he's in attendance per state.
Okay.
And so I would love to see, you know, but there's opportunities at, you know, at HF, at Hartwell, they've got some nice skills for kids that maybe aren't necessarily college-bound and saying, hey, you know what, you can still have a great, so as long as you're, you know, I would love to have a company that was like deeply involved with the, you've given them opportunities like that and also deeply involved coming to our village events and things like that and just sort of maintaining presence, that would be fantastic.
And I would love to do, like, it's one thing to talk about it and kids are so experiential, they need to see it.
Right.
And so, you know, weekly, monthly tours, whatever it needs, I feel like once we get kids and individuals in the door, young adults in the door, it kind of sells itself, you know, and it's something that everyone can relate to, everyone's got at least twenty-two years at home, you know, so it's something that they like, there's a lot of young adults are creating their own brands and it's a way to get them kind of off the couch and off the video games and into the real world, and that's one of the things we talked about today was creating a system of routine and discipline that someone sometimes can be lacking. And we have a really good support structure because our people that are now in a position of power and leadership have never been, you know, and it's no longer an excuse, so we spend a lot of time on leadership training and our people have grown tremendously, including myself. Now, I've never been in charge of a company like this before and every day it gets bigger, every day we're growing, and how do we continue to lead the people that will lead the next generation of employees? And why I'm saying that is because a lot of my people have come from troubled backgrounds and they've figured out a way to be successful, have a great family and provide for them as well, and that's really important to me as well.
Awesome, awesome, thank you so much.
Trustee Anais? It appears you're doing everything right, thank you for a comprehensive presentation. Everything looks good?
I appreciate that.
I'll say so far for that reason, I mean. Trustee Harris Jones?
I'm also in, great presentation.
Thank you.
Very thorough.
Trustee Roman?
Yeah, actually, I had a few questions that you answered throughout the presentation. I love your business model, I love that you take on people with special needs and give them jobs and I think that everything that you have said here today, you're going to be a great neighbor here in Homewood, so.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
John, in working with you, you related a story some time ago on how quickly you got out some shirts when the Buffalo Bills players, some Hardey Agarast, would you relate to that?
Yeah, it was pretty interesting, so one of our clients, I'm a Sox fan, but Northside, Northside's do a lot of t-shirts, so they, a company called Obvious Shirts, his story's really cool. Friend of mine now, but he, he started a company, long story short, he wore Jake Arias' good at baseball when he was dominating like 2016, seventeen. He, like a lot of people that sell t-shirts around the stadium illegally, got slapped on the wrist and he went about it the right way, saying he was an ex-software engineer, he had some money saved up, he's like, well, how much for licensing? So he got the licensing, started printing t-shirts, I met him about two years later, I'm like, you just sell, let us do the printing, and he's done a ton of amazing work in terms of charity. J E, the Bears beat writer that unfortunately got cancer and died, they ended up raising, I think, like two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for him. And so he's garnered a lot of attention, not just that, originally, but nationally as well. So we just did the ALS shirts for Lou Gehrig Day for Major League Baseball, we sent them to every major league stadium across the country, but what, and their whole field was getting at was when DeMar Hamlin collapsed in the field last NFL season, they, NFL commissioner actually contacted our client and said, how quickly can you get, I think it was like thirty-eight thousand shirts printed for, because that was a Monday night game, so they wanted something on Sunday, so we were able to get it done for them and it was really cool to see, like, and especially too, again, when you talk to young kids and you say, hey, listen, what you do, now you're going to see in your community, when you turn on TV on Saturday, you're going to see it at college football games, you know, so it's like, it's pretty cool to see the fruits of your labor on national TV, so really cool stuff.
And one other story if you could relate, your oldest employee.
Earl, Earl Morris Jr., he's actually got a shirt in here, some samples I brought, so Earl's been with the company, as we say, he came with the building, so he's been with the company thirty-six years, just in, he's basically my adopted first son, I do have two other boys, but Earl, special needs, pretty much abandoned by his family, sad story in that remark, but absolutely a story of inspiration because when you talk about fortitude and will, and I talk to some young kids on a daily basis that are struggling with getting out of bed and coming in and work, it's like, look at this guy, he has every excuse in the world to not be successful. When we first brought, when we first introduced to him, when he came here, I'm like, where does this guy come from? And when we were at Eighty-seventh in Harlem, we found out that he lived at Sixty-third and Stony and took a bus, two hours each way to get to work, never, never late, and I mean, he is, I'm not going to say severely disabled, but he has a very bad speech impediment and a slight delay, but just unbelievable with this guy. Then we just started digging in, like, he had family, he did this and there was no records, nothing, so we moved him much closer to the business and now he's the coach of our competitive player softball team, he's the godfather to my boys and, yeah, he was just a special guy, yeah.
Very nice story.
Yeah, thank you.
With all that being said and welcome to Homewood, may I have two motions approved? The budget amendment for the option to purchase the thirteen thirteen, one hundred and seventy-fifth street building, may I have a motion for that please?
Second.
Been moved by trustee Hyferman, second by trustee Roman, roll call please.
Trustee Colton?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Roman?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Secondly, letter of intent for the thirteen thirteen and thirteen fifty-one, one hundred and seventy-fifth street apparel redefined.
President?
They have a motion on item B as well.
Second?
Been moved by trustee Colton, second by trustee Roman, roll call please.
Trustee Colton?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Roman?
Aye.
President Hofeld?
Aye. Again, Homewood.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We'll have to get the opening about.
My kids will be there for the kids of Harry.
I'm sorry, not to interrupt, there's something, have I expressed the view or?
Yeah, yeah. So this is some HF stuff that we did last week, and then we printed this this morning, which is apparently refined.
They would have worn that, we would have, we would have liked that.
We do some leatherette, sorry, I'll show, so this is using a laser machine to essentially burn away leather and then sew it to, to hats, we do a lot of that, actually police and fire and Crestwood as well, we do a lot of their chevrons and all that type, we work with Eagle uniform, right next to us in Crestwood, we do a lot of their outsourcing, so this is just some HF embroidery. We have, anyone's into horror movies, I'm not, we have a new client that's utilizing that new machine where they have, I think, six hundred and seventy-five SKUs all around horror movies, so again, their old stockroom was almost the size of our facility and they would just, they probably missed thirty percent of their actual sale because there were stockouts and the person they were using before would require a hundred and fifty-five quantities of a design like that to print, you know, they wouldn't do it until they got a hundred and fifty-five backorders, so it's like, we've completely eliminated the need for that to have this print-on-demand technology, so once kind of word gets out via marketing or word of mouth, the digital print technology is really going to be amazing, because like, the quality is just impactful, like the colors, the vibrancy, like to do this screen print, to set that up could take like two to three hours, like for example, someone just sent this order in, because you can go online and like, come into like Etsy and Pinterest and you see all these type of people, you know, selling that type of stuff, they're actually making it, it gets connected in the backend software, it comes to us, because someone really likes pickles. And they put pickles on their shirt, I mean, whatever, it's, it is what it is. Windy City Smokeout is this weekend, I believe, so we're doing all the headwear for Windy City Smokeout, so this is a, this is a really nice client, Lass Entertainment is a really good client for us. This is just an example of embroidery for where I used to go, Marys High School, and a lot of like, local colors, Hispanic Heritage Month, full color design, and then this is just an example of the laser technology where it burns away the image, it leaves the background, and here's the picture of Earl, the man and the legend, his birthday, we had last April. And, yeah, when I say twill, I'm not sure if people really understand what the heck I'm talking about, but it's about that, so this, this is a twill jersey where it actually has fabric sewn, so it's more on-field, it's probably the most premium decorations I can get out there, but most durable, so high schools that, whether they have a big budget or not, they usually do that because those are the jerseys you'll get three to four years out of and then, you know, it's year one, varsity, then it gets passed on to sophomores on, by year three, they're freshmen, but, yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
No? Thank you.
With all that being said, general board discussion, trustee Coleman?
I've got nothing yet.
I have something, next Tuesday, Fourth of July, come enjoy the parade, but leave the fireworks on the other side of the border for the rest of the day, if you don't know who you're aggravating, what dog you're kicking into a leader, what veteran is having difficulty with what you are getting a couple of seconds of enjoyment out of, let's eliminate fireworks.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Yes, please come out, walk with us during the parade route and have a great time.
Trustee Roman?
I would like to address the woman that came up and spoke about your daughter, thank you for staying for the meeting and thank you for coming up and speaking. I also have a daughter who has a physical disability, she has a difficult time walking and I think that, I don't know the legality of it, but if we as a village could give our place a handicap spot in front of your home, I know as a mom and the challenges that you guys face daily, if that, I think that's the least we could do to take one challenge away from you, so I would hope that we could do that for you guys.
Good idea, good idea.
Yeah.
If you will, listen to that, please, stay for a moment. Would I may have a motion, adjourn please?
Second?
Been moved by trustee Colton, second by trustee Roman, roll call please.
Trustee Colton?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Roman?
Aye.
Please stand adjourned, thank you all.